Moving the curb cut, reducing it and then moving it on the entrance of forty-six. I think that would help eliminate a lot. But whatever, I just hope we just consider the safety of our pedestrians in our neighborhood down there and just keep pushing forward with that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
And is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? See, Noah and I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we just have the one application for us. Site plan review. Staff has recommended ten conditions. Are there any further questions of staff or would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Kronzer.
Clarifying question for staff. Was there any traffic study or TDMP completed for this project?
There was not. The requirement in the zoning code for a travel demand management plan would be a hundred thousand square feet of non-residential space. Public Works has a similar requirement and Public Works did not require the traffic study. They felt that with the new proposal, providing the adequate amount of stacking spaces, that they were comfortable that the street had the capacity for this use.
All right. Are there any further questions? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question for staff. Sorry. Too slow. I spoke with the Eleventh Board Council Office and understood that there was a public meeting in February where folks were talking about the garbage dumpsters as well as how the drive-through speakers would be oriented. Do you have those comments and details?
Sure. So, one of the public comments that was received did talk about, the proposal includes two different trash enclosures. So, there's one up here and then another one over here. That was a concern. Or they were encouraging the applicant to have just one trash enclosure for the overall site. And then the, there was also a concern that the ordering windows would, or the ordering microphones would face towards the residential uses. So, that was a concern as well that was brought up.
Would it be possible to add conditions that would reflect, do you know if the project team was aware of those comments or wanted to comment about adding a condition that would co-collocate garbage dumpsters away from Forty-seventh Street and then a condition that would ensure that the noise from speakers doesn't face residential areas?
My understanding was that that was discussed at the neighborhood meeting. I wasn't there, but, so I think they are aware of those comments. We had encouraged in the staff report that they would, we'd encouraged them to co-locate the trash enclosures, but we didn't talk about the microphones or the ordering microphones. But that's certainly something that could be added of conditions.
Yeah. Maybe we could have the applicant address that and see about the feasibility of both of those things.
The current speaker box is located right in this general area right here. I've circled it. The person at the meeting asked if we could point it due north, which would be approximately in this area right here. We, as the applicant, do not have a problem doing that. We do need to work with Starbucks because what that'll do is that will move the stacking back further and into the site more. So, we'd appreciate it if we could review that with the coffee shop to see if that's something that they're amenable to. And we can work with staff on that. We don't have a problem moving it over here, but that will elongate the stacking further into the site. As far as the trash is concerned, that is an existing trash location right up here. And we have a new trash location located right down here. This is for the coffee shop and this is for the retail building. And we'd like to keep both of those as we have them drawn right now. This is an existing condition and it's serviced by the alley.
All right. Thank you. And are there any further questions? Would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Bender. Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Kronzer.
I will start this out. I'd like to add at least one condition. Possibly, possibly two, but I'd like to move staff recommendations for a site plan review and add a condition number eleven, which is, and I want to speak to this once I finish this. The project shall be limited to one curb cut onto Cedar Avenue, limited to twelve foot, two inches as designed on the site plan, and limited to one-way exit only.
All right. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Kronzer.
Yeah. You know, these are our commercial notes. This commercial note has been pretty devastated from its traditional form. You think about, you know, turn of the last century, buildings up to the corner, walkable, parking in the back, safe sidewalks, limited curb cuts off the major avenue. And having a five-year-old son walking on busy streets, the major impediment to safety is curb cuts off of a busy street, especially when there's on-street parking and there's high traffic speeds. Anything that we can do as a city to keep traffic movements where they should be, to traffic intersections, Forty-sixth and Cedar, to existing curb cuts, the curb cut off of Forty-sixth into this existing site and the parking lot that's not being modified too much. I don't think this really affects the operation of the drive-through as much as I wish it were, but the drive-through is allowed. We can't do anything about that, but we can kind of protect our pedestrian district and our pedestrian zone. I think this is a fair compromise to, you know, allow the uses that are allowed and still do the best we can given what we're, what we have to work with.
Mr. Whitton.
Commissioners, if I could just clarify so that we aren't in a situation where we're disagreeing about the intent of your condition. The, I think you meant that your intent is that in addition to the curb cut along Forty-seventh, that they are limited to one curb cut along Cedar Avenue, not that they're on the site limited to just one curb cut in totality.
Correct. Limited to one on Cedar as it's designed, that's a twelve-foot, two inches. Good clarification.
And, Mr. President, if I could just suggest that we allow the applicant an opportunity to speak to that so that we're not insuring an appeal, if we can get their feedback about that.
Yep. We can do that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the moment? Commissioner Rockwell.
Sorry. Just clarification again, Commissioner Kronzer. So, the intent is to have the, well, no, the northernmost curb cut on Cedar going into the site, but then the, the exit from the drive-through would be redirected?
I believe that is correct.
No, the opposite. So, the, the into the site would be off of Forty-sixth.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And then the out would be on Cedar.
So, you are intending to eliminate one curb cut, not redirect one curb cut?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to ask the applicant to respond to that addition of a condition.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Thieroff. I'm an attorney and I represent the applicant. This is, of course, new to us. We've, it's been a long process. I know you've known, you know that this has been continued on a number of occasions. We've had multiple meetings with staff, input from Public Works. And it's a complicated project because we've got a tenant that has to approve everything that we agree to. Because this is coming up at the eleventh hour, we haven't had an opportunity to discuss this particular proposal with our tenant. And of course, for that reason, can't consent to it. But just from a practical standpoint, if I could point something out.
Hold on to the tenant.
We've heard a lot, a lot of feedback and sentiment regarding traffic maneuvers and so forth. If you, in fact, eliminate the ability to turn in off of Cedar and you have an exit only there, you're going to have southbound traffic traveling down Cedar and they will realize that there's a Starbucks there and a place to get a coffee after it's too late for them to turn into Forty-sixth and actually enter the site. So, you will either have the would-be Starbucks customer doing a U-turn somewhere to get back, to come back and enter the site through Forty-sixth, or if they're not so brand loyal, they'll go to Caribou. Then you've got increased customers taking a left into the Caribou and into a coffee shop that has significantly less stacking than this site has. This site is set up for a stacking of ten cars, which is two and a half times the minimum requirement. There's ample space to stack a lot of cars there and we need for them to be able to enter safely. And the way to do that, from our perspective, is through this proposed and diagrammed entrance off of Cedar. It's not to say my client is absolutely opposed to it, but as I expressed to you, it's not something that we can agree here today because of our obligations to our prospective tenant.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan review with one condition related to limiting the number of curb cuts on Cedar Avenue. Are there any other amendments to that motion or any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? If there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Squeezy.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Zipke Pierre.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item four. Our next item for discussion is item six, the Ironclad. And since, I believe we only have one speaker for that item, maybe you could come to the microphone and if you had a question or a minor issue, maybe you could ask that so we don't ask staff to give a full formal presentation on the whole project. Maybe we have a couple of speakers.
No. First of all, my name is Randy Manthee. I live at one hundred third Avenue South. I'm here representing the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association Land Use Committee, and I would like to express my thanks to the commission and to the applicant and the team for hanging around. This could have been cleaned up very simply through consent, but I'd just like to discuss one item. There's no need to do a full formal presentation of the project. I'd like to just address a couple of really quick items. First of all, this is a great project. We had an opportunity to review this project at the DMNA land use meeting on May the third. So, the applicant came in with their team, did a full presentation of the project. We had a very good discussion. We identified four particular items that we asked the developer to look at as they proceeded to further refine the project. Those items were the blank south wall on the parking garage, which has been addressed and is a part of the staff report. The second item is the width of the curb cut off of Chicago Avenue. That also was addressed and resolved to the satisfaction of the DMNA. The next item is the developer should maximize every opportunity to integrate trees and other greenery into the public realm. If you look at the planting plan and the design of this project, they've gone above and beyond to create a public edge as well as a very unique back. Are we calling it an alley or have you come up with a new name for it? Walkway through which the neighborhood can navigate to and from Mill District over to the stadium. So, again, offering up a little delightful opportunity as far as integrating into the strange geometries and elevations, great elevations on this property. The one item I would like to address in particular, and I've talked to the applicant about this, and I've sent a note into the city today, it's something I'd like to address on a broader level but apply to the specific project, and that is the issue of dog relief on facilities. With all the issues in the world, you may think of dog relief as a rather trite discussion item, but when you think about the number of units that are now being built in the downtown area, you have the Legacy with three hundred-plus units, you have Two-O-Five Park with a hundred and twenty-seven units, Ironclad with a hundred and seventy-one units, you have East Town, you have some other projects coming forward. And generally, and I'll be somewhat conservative in my numbers here, usually get about twenty-five, thirty percent of the units are occupied with owners who have dogs. So, you know, we're dumping two, three hundred dogs out onto the streets with all this new development in the downtown area. And what we're asking right now, I know the city has nothing on their books, nothing in your zoning regulations that addresses this item. This is an item that's real. Other cities are challenged by this. Going forward, I would very much appreciate it if this board, commission could look at that, if the planning staff could look at that as an opportunity. And so, when a development is built, that facility is integrated into the new development. A beautiful example, a well-done example, is the addition. They have a little outdoor dog area as well as an indoor facility. It becomes a tremendous marketing opportunity for the project. It brings value to the community in that the dogs, and many times their needs are addressed, you know, on the facility without having to take them across the street and inevitably they end up relieving themselves on other people's property who are trying to maintain their grass and shrubs and such. The DMNA truly supports dogs. We value dogs in the downtown area. They bring tremendous value to the owners. They are a way to promote sense of community and also they puts eyes on the street when people are walking their dogs. So, it's a very positive thing. It's just this one thing needs to get addressed. And the only way this can be addressed is in the physical development of projects on properties. This isn't something you can many times go and do as an after-the-fact item. So, what I would like to do is just ask the applicant, and I've discussed this with them in advance, if they could just please explain how they're handling it on this project and as a way to ensure that this gets done and it gets done well, that the commission condition the project on providing an onsite relief facility that is designed specifically for this purpose and not taking the end of a flowerbed and calling it a dog relief area. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I know we have at least one other speaker, but why don't we have the staff presentation right now?
All right. I just have a really brief presentation. The applications before you tonight for this proposal include a conditional use permit, variance, and site plan review. The location of the property is at Washington and Chicago and includes several different parcels. The parcel or the property has a unique shape because of the former location of the red road. I have some historic photos to show because we're including a condition of approval related to the retaining wall. So, some historic photos where you can see the viaducts that used to cross at Washington and Chicago. The arrows note where the property is. Sorry, that one is turned the wrong way. Here's probably the best photo. You can see the retaining wall that's still on site, or portion of it is still on site is right here. Can you see that person? The proposal, as I said, conditional use permit to increase maximum height. There's a residential portion of the building that exceeds the maximum height. It's fourteen stories where the district maximum is ten stories. There's a hotel portion that faces Chicago Avenue, which is only eight stories. So, that complies with the height requirement. It's just that residential portion. Then they have a second phase that's proposed along Ninth Avenue, which would add four additional stories on top of the parking garage, which is to the rear of the property. And includes two levels of underground parking and two levels of upgrade parking. There's a variance of the northeast interior side yards. That's just for the residential windows that are located along this section of the building and they extend out to four feet from the property line where fifteen feet is required and then site plan review for the overall site. We are recommending approval with several conditions. We had not addressed the dog relief issue in our staff report, so that it's not a zoning code requirement, so it's not something we would typically evaluate during the site plan review process. And I can take any questions.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak at this time and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Pete Keely with Collage Architects. I'm here representing the Karbonda family. Varun Karbonda is also here tonight and Graves Hospitality. Jim and Ben Graves are here as well to answer questions if you have them. So, we're really pleased with the project and kind of the direction it's going and working with the neighborhood group to kind of provide a, kind of a redevelopment for what was a parking lot and try to incorporate some of the historical elements, including the name. Ironclad actually was the name of the old grain elevator that was on the site and incorporating some of those walls and some of the stone to try to make it, you know, a little piece of history there. We know that the dogs are a big issue and actually my numbers would probably be a little higher than the twenty-five to thirty percent on dog ownership. So, it's a big concern to us because those are future residents and a future market that we do have. So, really trying to provide amenities that are akin to the market of which bikes are a big one, dogs are a big one, and granite and all those types of things as well. So, we do have, on the plans that you have, there are, there is a dog run shown on the upper floor, the dog run with the idea that that happens on the third-level patio. So, that was originally proposed. There are some concerns about how phase two happens and where a dog run happens within that and also the idea that as dogs are out walking, you're coming in and out of a lower-level floor. They actually may not get to the dog run. We are incorporating a dog spa, washing, foot washing on the lower level at the kind of northeast corner where the walkway is. So, we are going to be incorporating kind of a dog relief area of some sort along the walkway. That has yet to be designed. That is something that is going to go in place, but we're also trying to coordinate landscaping and generators or transformers and whatnot. So, we've got a lot of moving parts in there, but the intent is to actually put that in that kind of walkway location. And then there's also some discussion about the future. They also own the property to the east of that as well, which is also a parking lot and the redevelopment of Ninth Avenue. So, that within that, we're looking at maybe kind of a phased approach to kind of figure out where the dog relief is, but it's certainly a big concern of us and will be provided in the project.
All right.
And with that, I think I would just open up to any questions.
And commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers and I think we have a couple of people who'd like to speak. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Let's see. I did not intend to speak today, so this is something that is very impromptu for me. I thought that the format today was going to be a little different than what I see.
And please state your name and address.
My name is Delma Bartelme. I'm a resident of the Zenith condominiums and recent to the city of Minneapolis. However, Minneapolis has, Minnesota has been a place that I have come to since a long time ago. Forty-five years of marriage has always meant that every summer we go to the cabin. I am an urban person at heart and grew up in Chicago, and so my comments are aimed and my questions are aimed at those of us who love being urban animals and also the Mississippi River. Okay. First of all, I think I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that I wore sneakers today. One of the ways that I got, that I get around is by walking. Certainly, you live in the city because you want to get rid of a car. And certainly Minneapolis has really impressed me with its planning and its ability to have people live here and to be able to get around and lower our carbon footprints. There is public transportation on Washington. There's the train accessibility to shopping areas and certainly entertainment is very easily gotten to by foot traffic. It's a wonderful place that I have chosen to live in. And so, my comments are a little bit wider than this particular project scope that you're addressing at this moment. Had a chance to chat with Pete and he has explained to me some of the walkability items that are incorporated into the project along Ninth Avenue. My main voice today for all of you, ladies and gentlemen, is that Washington is truly deplorable when it comes to foot traffic. I can't walk side-by-side with my husband currently. There are, it's not wide enough for two people to walk side-by-side in many areas between Chicago, Portland, Ninth Avenue, Tenth Avenue, because there have been additions of meters marking parking spots. There are dubious areas that are designated for trees that really aren't serving their purpose now since the trees have died. So, it's difficult for a couple with children, for example, to be able to walk with a stroller. It's also difficult to maintain. There are many people who I have seen walking, falling because it's difficult to clear snow, ice, et cetera, from that area. And I'm referring to, again, between the Tenth Avenue and getting closer to the Renaissance Steeple area. The reason why I'm speaking to this lack of being able to walk or lowering the walkability index is also because you have some other projects that are scheduled to be erected along this neighborhood of ours. So, please consider that in your reviews. I think at this particular meeting, you're taking a look more or less at the particular tree as opposed to the forest. I don't know why, you know, there isn't a, there isn't, perhaps I'm not aware of a venue where you take a look at the whole projects, more than one project and its effect on the neighborhood. Perhaps this organization, the DMNA, is one of the resources that we have. The second point I would like to mention, I want to draw your attention to, is my voice about the skyline and it refers to the exception on height, the restriction on, there is, you have a height limitation and there, I noticed that there, there's a constant review for bending that rule. Why do you have that if you're going to be continuously asking for hearings, et cetera, that that height limit is not being met in one way or another? Skyline is something that perhaps needs to be considered on a more holistic approach. You have some beautiful features in your skyline. In particular, I'd like to draw your attention to the clock in this, in this building. With the height, you are losing that feature, which in my opinion and historically speaking is key to your city. Please consider that also as you review your, your planning and your approval of the different projects. What is going to be the focus of your skyline? How do you want it hidden? How do you want it to showcase your city, our city as time goes by and as there's a need for finding exceptions and approvals to exceptions on your height? Okay. Let's see. Thank you. I think that those are the points that I wanted to make today.
All right. Thank you. And I think we have one other speaker and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I also, my name's Anthony Foster, resident of the Zenith condominiums right on Second Street, nine oh one Second Street. We're well within the three hundred fifty feet limit of the proposed Ironclad property. I've been a taxpaying resident of the Zenith now since October 2013. We looked at the property for a considerable amount of time before we decided to buy and were assured, although we noticed there was quite a bit of undeveloped lots of parking, et cetera, or surrounding a building, that there was a height restriction along the Washington Avenue corridor, which would limit the amount of tall buildings would go in within our sight The city's spent a good bit of time in the redevelopment project of the Washington Avenue. Right away, it's been painfully, one thing we've worked around for the last year and will continue. I think it's going to be a good addition to the property east, the downtown east area. However, I think if we start building or allowing a variance for the height, maybe only in this case, a very small variance, but the next time around, somebody's going to increase that. to increase that a little more, we'll have the concrete canyon, you know, glass concrete canyon to negotiate every time we go up and down Washington Avenue. I think it'd be a detriment to the overall downtown east scene and for the residents therein. And the next thing you know, somebody might throw up a fifty-one story Trump Tower a couple blocks away. Otherwise, I welcome the project. It looks like a beautiful plan. I think it'll be an addition, a welcome addition with a retail space. I'd just like to see the, the restriction on height maintained here and in the future projects that might be developed along the Washington Avenue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and commissioners, we have three applications before us. Are there any further questions of staff, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Anyone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Cronzer.
I will move staff recommendation. Item A, conditional use permit with the one stated condition.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item A, the conditional use permit for height. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
I think just because two of our commentators talked about the height, the, the height, the conditional use permit to increase height is, is essentially the city's burden to show that there is some significant harm to deny it. So I think that both of your comments were, were heard and, but we don't have actually a lot of power to, to keep height down. I do think if, for one of our speakers, curious about the process for the holistic thinking, there are discussions right now around the comprehensive plan, which is the ten-year planning document. So, and that will be continuing in the next year. So that's a way to get involved in that, that thinking.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Cronzer.
Aye.
Zipke Pierre.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Squeezie.
Aye.
Vreeland.
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right, and that motion carries. Next, we have items B and C. Commissioners, Commissioner Cronzer.
Sure, I'll, I'll move B and C together. Motion to approve staff recommendation to approve the variance from the fifteen feet to four feet for the windows yard setback, and also see site plan review with the six stated conditions.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve items B and C. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Magrino.
I'll just say about the pet issue, I live in Lauren Park, so also pretty much downtown, and kitty corner from my apartment building is Emerson School, and they've got a decent amount of grass kind of right there on Spruce and Fifteenth. And they have had so much dog poop in the, on the grounds of the school that the kids at the school have put up like tens of signs. They're all hand drawn with like crying emoji poops begging people to not let their dogs poop on the grass. So I would agree that it is kind of an issue because a lot of people do have dogs downtown. And I think we maybe give points in a planned unit development for a pet relief area, but it's not something that's currently part of our zoning review. So that is maybe something that we could look at as we are updating our zoning code with the comprehensive plan because it is a concern, but it sounds like they did have some facilities in the building for, for pets. So just wanted to throw out that general comment.
Thank you. And Commissioner Vreeland.
Suggest a poop dedication fee.
Poop dedication fee. That could work.
All right, and if there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve items B and C. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland.
Aye.
Squeezie.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Zipke Pierre.
Aye.
Cronzer.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item six. I should also mention that today is Lisa Steiner's last meeting with us, so we are sad to lose her and wish her well back in Denver. So thank you for your few years with us.
If I could just add to that, you know, we have high expectations of our city planners, and Lisa has definitely exceeded all of those expectations. She is just such a great colleague and is extremely resourceful and thoughtful and gives great presentations to the City Planning Commission and Zoning and Planning Committee. So we wish her well, but are going to miss her dearly.
All right, and that concludes our agenda for today. We have committee of the hall on Thursday. Otherwise, our meeting is adjourned.